I think everybody's here is going to be here for the core block meeting. Russ is going to call at eight to five, but I'm all turned over today.
Before you do that, Matt, would you tell me once you came with yourself about my request to know about disaster?
Yeah, we're under EMA, Madison County EMA, we're getting it separately for City of Jackson. So Madison County EMA has their emergency and standard center that we go to right now. We have a emergency operations center that opens up in time after disaster. We have representatives for each organization to meet out there during tornado watches and things like that. And so we're going to look at how we establish our mobile demand in addition to Madison County EMA.
And that should be made about when?
Uh, next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks, okay, thank you. Okay. So in your most recent packet of information, you've got a document that looks like this to begin with, okay? Now, mine isn't a fun binder because Jeff just said she didn't trust me to come downstairs and not drop it in the papers go everywhere. And so she dyed it, but not in here. But the document, the first 11 or so pages are actually the budget ordinance that you guys will consider. I'm going to walk you through that just very briefly. Page two includes the general fund and the pension fund. Everybody got, everybody got what they need to look at?
We're just going to talk about, and then we're going to go through the agenda. What I don't want, if we can talk around the agenda, we can kind of work through some of it so we're not here till nine o'clock.
I just want to make sure we're on to that.
You know, we're not, we're not going to agenda either, we're just talking about this. And we can talk back again. So if we don't get done talking by five or by four till nine, then we'll just stop, start going through the agenda.
So if you look on page two, you'll see that the general fund revenue number is about $99 million. That's at the bottom of the first section on page two. The general fund expenditure number is about $100,000, $100,000, $118,000. That was a positive number, but we're trying to balance out a landfill fund with $521,000 transfer, which put us in a negative, but we need to take care of that. You can flip through those pages and see the summary information for each of the different funds that are part of the budget ordinance. The thing that's worth looking at, first of all, is your capital outlay fund, which is on page five of that document. Those are the capital requests that we've got. You'll see that there is, there's some new money there. There's a transfer in, in the revenue section, that transfer comes from the general fund. There's a corresponding transfer out at the general fund. If you turn to the next page, page six, you'll see a new fund that you've never seen before. It's called the capital street fund. And we'll talk a little bit about this in a minute, but the revenues there, eight cents of the proposed tax adjustment are assigned there. And that taxes line that totals $1.877 million is a result of that eight cent property tax allocation. There is a line there listed as other, $1.386 million. That number is the increment between what the current city sticker is and what the new city sticker would be. A total revenue of about $3.263 million. In order to build something of a fund balance in there, we just appropriated $3 million even to leave $263,000 to help begin accumulating a small fund balance there. I'll be honest, it makes it easier when it's not a zero. Going on from there, you'll see on the landfill fund, I told you that there was a $521,000 transfer out of the general fund. The landfill fund, you see that $521,000 transfer reflected there. That will correct a negative fund balance that's existed in the landfill fund for the last couple of years. You need to take care of it sometime. I didn't take care of it last year, we're going to take care of it this year. It's not real money, well, it is real money, but it's just a fund balance issue. Then, if you go on to page eight, you will see the debt service fund, which shows a difference of about $2.6, $2.69 million there, which would supposedly, I mean, will be able to support the new debt that is contemplated. That will increase that fund balance by, you know, $2.6 million or so. Page nine of the document shows our projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year '25. And also our current debt payments on page nine is our debt obligations for fiscal year '26 if we have that. And then finally, if you look on page 10, under section seven, you'll see the property tax allocation, which shows a general fund property tax of $1.48, a street capital fund property tax appropriation of .08 or eight cents, and a debt service fund of 29 cents for a total tax of $1.85. All of the rest of the pages after that are the supporting documents. Those numbers tie to the numbers that are on the first 11 pages. Now, the proposed tax change will generate, I haven't got my page ready. The proposed tax change will generate, it's not even in this thing. Well, it's going to generate the $3.5 or $3.6 million of the general fund, about $3.2 million to be allocated to the capital street fund. The idea with the capital street fund, we talked about doing a special revenue fund, but since this is not technically special revenue, we can't do that, it's not dedicated revenue. But it is a capital street fund that will allow you, first of all, to know that the money going in and the money going out is designated for street servicing. And then also after you get your initial projects done, that capital street fund would allow you to always have money set aside for street maintenance and that sort of thing. And so there's my quick overview of those. I hope you've had a chance at least to look through that before you, before you came.
Without the taxing person?
I'm sorry, sir?
Do you want to copy the budget without the taxing person? Is that the one you had the other day?
And this, this budget here would create $3.6 million for the general fund based on a dollar eighty-five, is that right?
Yes, sir. Well, yeah, it creates, it creates that surplus using, if you look on page seven, excuse me, page 10 of that, you'll see the general fund portion of that tax is $1.48.
Yeah. All right, now what about the proposed increase in, not proposed, but suggested maybe, increase in the city sticker?
The city sticker increase, if you look on page six, you'll see two different numbers on the revenue side. You'll see $1.877 million for new tax, and you'll see $1.386 million. And that $1.386 million is the new city sticker allocation.
Which one?
$1.386.
Why is there a difference there when it's a $25?
Because the number at the top is based on the property tax collection, and the $1.386 is based on the city sticker collection.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So what was the point of creating? Because you're saying the capital street fund has never been in the budget. So what, again, was the point of creating it just, is one of the points is if the tax increase is approved, this is a way you can justify showing where the money for the streets is going to go?
Well, I mean, there was some concern among some of, among some of the council members that we called to, to say that if we did this, we want to be able to track and know that those funds are being spent only on streets and streets improvements. And the idea was we will stick it in a special fund, and that's all that you'll spend out of that fund. That's different than the capital fund. And I'll be honest, there were people in my office that said, why do we have to create a new fund? Because it's just, it's just more. But I think we'll be able to be, I think we'll be able to be more accountable, and you'll be able to see a clearer view of what was, what was spent if you go with it your own.
And you said it shows that if there's an increase in the city sticker, that would provide a additional revenue, three point something?
$1.386.
So, $1.386.
$1.386.
Five, six.
Three, six.
And you said that the, just the property tax increase would generate?
How much do you handle it? It's going to generate $1.98 of capital. Yes, sir, it's going to be. Yeah, the, it's going to generate about $3.176 million.
Because of the debt?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm opposed to tax, but that has nothing to do with what I'd like to say. If we needed tax, we need more than a week before voting on the budget to look at it. We need a six or nine month budget committee working, laying out the leads, laying out the long-term leads, the short-term leads, and.
Well, let me just piggyback on that. Additionally, I talked to the CPA of the firm that does the auditing today in Chattanooga. And the audit is supposed to be done by December 31st to show where all of the money is being spent. And he said, part of the reason why it hasn't been done is because Nathan, when he came in, there was a lot that he had cleaned up. The Tyler Venus system was, like, being implemented, but there are still documents from the city that have not been provided. And that's why the audit has not been finished. Now, he did say Nathan has been working really hard, and I agree with that. And I spoke to Nathan afterwards, and Nathan said they're hoping to have the audit completed by June. And, I mean, I also told Nathan that I feel like you can have a proposed budget, but I feel also that it's kind of premature to have to vote on a budget when you don't have all of the numbers from last year. So if the audit committee weren't retold that we won't schedule?
No. We're, we're six hours behind. We have asked for extension, so we're a little late. We're way behind.
So we're not going to be taxed that amount they talked about?
Yeah, that's a new vulnerability.
But that, that doesn't, red hair because again, it actually will turn into the. There's penalty if you don't do it.
Yeah, there is.
But it gets, it gets held in reserve, but it comes back to you. But it's a, it's a county nightmare trying to, it's a county nightmare, and you wouldn't lose any money just to.
I have a question. I think y'all were saying two different things. I want to hear the like.
I'm saying it's, for me, the audit should have been finished in December and provided to us.
Yeah. And. What about that 15% that we just said?
Well, that is just from the state, like, chapter that says that if it's not completed in X amount of time, the state is going to tax the city 15% of sales tax.
It's putting it in reserve. And comes back to us, it's just an accounting nightmare trying to follow.
Yeah, so they're going to tax this, but then it'll come back once we get where we're supposed to.
But your point is valid.
This upcoming period.
We're asking the budget.
True audit's going.
Right, right now, we're already laying one, and I don't get it.
This is like the council goes into effect immediately.
It starts next, everything starts next.
So, so I am just not feeling very confident in voting on a budget when I don't have the numbers from last year. And the fact that the CPA said that there had to be a lot of cleanup to do between Bobby and Nathan, that tells me that maybe some things, I mean, were not done correctly, or, I don't know.
Let me see numbers, we don't know.
Right, right.
Well, according to the law, though, we have to have it passed by.
Well, we hadn't extended last year. It's not favorable.
Y'all want to do that again.
Right, but it's not favorable by the.
It's not favorable, so we need to come up with a solid, you know, plan on how to balance. And to me, raising taxes is not major. I think that we can be able to cut some and get the money from, a little bit from the fund balance. I mean, I hate, hate, hate to be the burden of the amount that we give to nonprofits, because I don't want to look like I'm heartless or don't care. But we're giving almost a million dollars to nonprofits. And half of the taxpayers don't even know what their mon, I mean, I go up to taxpayers and I'm like, do you know that your money's being given to donated nonprofits? That's not, I mean, taxpayers should know where their money's going.
Did you cut out the, all the, all the money to all the nonprofits, or you would cut certain nonprofits?
If we can't figure out how to balance the budget without raising taxes, yeah. And that sounds, that sounds horrible.
Cut it out to all of them?
Probably. And one of them, the Southwest Summer Youth Jobs Program, that's where I work. Cat, city gives $50,000, county gives $50,000. That means the summer jobs program isn't going to happen next year.
You willing to cut that out?
I, I mean.
You want to make a kid that don't pay?
I do, because I know all the kids that came today for Project Takeoff and summer jobs. So yes.
Are we getting into this now, is this book?
I was going to ask Nathan about open finance first before we.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I mean, it sucks, it sucks that we're put in the position that we're in.
And before you do it, if all of it are haplative, for example, we've got $150,000 to give a type that goes basically by tables. And, you know, just as a suggestion, perhaps we need to cut that number in half and still give it to them and say, don't, we won't, go on paper. You don't have to pay for food, you don't have to pay for that.
The policy that was in the book?
I'm sorry?
The policy that was in the packet?
Yeah.
Covers all that.
Yeah. So, oh, you're going to do one of the tables?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if they're, if they're in allocations, the policy that I gave you if you asked about last time in the packet of the book, talks about if there's an allocation, then you cannot ask for donation.
A one-time, just one-time thing, not to show up maybe three times.
Okay.
But I would like to, when we can go back, go back to Richard's point on spending versus how it's helping the city and how we could look at that.
Let's, let Nathan talk about open finance first, and then we can come back to that.
I don't go back to the audit.
Okay, well, let's, let's talk about that first, and then we'll come back to it.
Okay.
So, we're getting mixed up in that.
So, this afternoon, apparently, we sent a press release out, right? And, but you guys, we talked about, in the budget committee, and I think we talked about in audit committees and other things. One of the things that was a priority for, well, for, for everybody, was, was to be able to present financial information in real time or almost real time to people, if you're anybody, really. And one of the features that we've got in our new operating, in our new financial system is the ability to publish that information in an easy to sort, easy to find, easy to search tool. And they call it open finance. And this afternoon, we turned that live. And if you go to the JacksonTia.gov website, it's the bottom left link, can you, you can click on that. You can see every. Is it in your email? Okay. You can see every transaction that the city's made. You can see where they stand on line item budget. If you want to know what the, what the operating supply line is in the city recorder's office, you can go and see what the budget was and how much we spent here today. You can drill down and see to whom the checks were written for that information. And that's, it's updated weekly. It's, it's really fascinating. We sent it out to Department Heads about a month ago, right? To see if there were things that we needed to tweak, at least in their eyes, to make it more accessible to those. And they were just thrilled with it, I'll be honest with you, because they were seeing things that they hadn't, they hadn't seen in their own budgets, just because of the way that it was presented. Couple of the struggles were to get some of our accounts organized, because they were sort of hodgepodge. And so we reorganized a couple of the accounts to make it easier to access. That's on the backside, not part of the software itself. And then the last hurdle that we had to do is that payments for some employee medical claims were appearing with their names in, on, on the site. And we were a little uncomfortable with that. And so we were able to get that information masked just for employee medical claims and just for on-the-job injuries type things. And so when we got that done, we were ready to go. So you guys are going to be busy tonight, and I know you're going to be thinking about a lot of things. When you get home, would you please go home and look at that? And, because it's, it's going to be, JP, have you seen it already? No, if, if, if you get home, have a look at that. It's, it is incredibly, it is incredibly impressive.
Where is it?
It's in your email.
It's in your email, but it's JacksonTia.gov, there's a bottom link to the bottom left. And it's, I have, you literally, I mean, if we were to print you a list of transactions, it would be thousands of pages long. But what you've got is the opportunity to get on there and look at that and see every check.
And that's a really good start. We've been asking.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, as far as, as far as transparency, as far as being able to be accountable to the public, I love the idea of, of being able to show that information. So did I miss anything on that, Ron? Okay.
All right, let me ask you this, Mr. Paul. Based upon your review of all of the expenditure and all of the, everything, everything within the budget, is it your view, and may I ask you, you can champion, that you've gone through and you've cut everything and you? I know we can cut everybody. I understand that. We can cut, we can cut the nonprofits, we can cut the contribution to the arts, we can cut everything. But based upon keeping Jackson at the point where it is, Mr. Paul, as you join the city and what the city has to offer, have you gone to that, to the level where you think that what you're presenting now is as far as you can go as far as any?
I, I will answer that, because it's, I'm not going to make that, all right? Because it's, it's just, he works on the half.
Okay.
It's, yeah, I think so. I think, yeah, you're right, Matt. We can, we can cut parts, we can cut, you know, street department maintenance, we can let stuff not get repaired, we can do all that. We can, I mean, you all say you all want to fund brown keepers, let the grass grow up, we can do that. Not fund capital, we can continue to try to make sure to prepare things. We can do all that, but, but as I said, we want to look at down the road how we make these investments for Jackson that my kids want to stay in, that Jake Pitsky doesn't want to stay in, Donnie's going to move back to. That we need to continue to make these investments. uh, that, uh, Jake Pitsky doesn't want to stay in, Johnny's going to move back to, um, that we need to continue to make these investments.
The amount of the deficit that's projected that we need to cover is what again, what's that amount again?
About 3.7.
3.7.
Which by the way is, I mean, in the latest set of paperwork you, in the latest set of paperwork you've got, it's not, I mean, it's obviously covered.
All right, 3.7.
Right.
All right. I don't mind just putting out where, where I am right now. I'm still, you know, considering and funding on top of this, Bob and Gears, talking to constituents and talking to everybody. Where I am right now is that I'm leaning toward, let me ask this person. I know you all have talked about before that, uh, the amount of money that's in the fund balance is about 20 million.
About 18. I was a little short. 18 and a half.
Okay. And that, uh, I believe you said that you would not recommend that we take this money from the fund balance. Uh, although we can do it, but you didn't recommend it. Is that right?
I'm never going to recommend you take money from fund balance. Okay. I mean, if you're looking at marginal amounts of money, 200,000, 300,000 a year, um, you're, but the city of Jackson has over the last several years, uh, actually historically, I hate to say, I want to say it. The city of Jackson historically has, uh, for a long time, uh, taken from fund balance in order to, uh, in order to balance its, its budget. Uh, in the last four or five years, you've had some, you've had some good years. Uh, but, I mean, that's not the way to run a city. Uh, it's, it's just not. Um, some years, and if you are planning and you're going to know, okay, we had a great year this year. We increased our fund balance 2 and a half million dollars. Well, next year you can hit it. Hit the fund balance for 2 million dollars if you need to. The thing is, in the last couple of years, um, you've, you've hit fund balance a couple of times. The, and I appreciate the local media for the way that they portrayed things. Uh, 15 million dollars is, is not necessarily a magic number, but that's the number we're, we're getting, we're getting close to where you think. Um, well, first of all, if you're looking at 15% operate, that, 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 that is a magic number as far as regulation goes. So if you're looking at 15 million, uh, 15 million dollar fund balance on a hundred million dollar budget, we're going to have to be, uh, we're going to have to justify some things to the state if you, if you reach that point.
You sure you can?
No, 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 if we reach that point, I thought I heard you said that the law would allow us to go down to 15% of the budget.
It will. I mean, the law will allow you to go to zero.
Um, but what do we have to justify? Why do we have to justify?
Because, because they are concerned about our ability to fund. When you get down to 15% of, of the budget essentially, fund balance is 15% of the budget. They begin to say, are you going to have the cash resources in order to meet your obligations through the entire year? That, that, that's a magic number with them. And so.
Our revenue season.
Revenue season, yeah. It's because, you know, we get a big chunk of revenue in between October and December. Uh, but when you get down to 15% of your fund balance, which in our case is about 15 million dollars, you, you have to do a cash flow forecast. You have to explain how, what your plan is to increase fund balance. And, I mean, 15 million dollars is a number that, that we're comfortable with. But, but to go back to your question, I, I don't want you to hit fund balance ever unless it's just marginal and you do it once every now and again and the fund balance goes higher the rest of the time. It's, it's just, it's just good business. It's just.
When we went down to say 16% of, uh, the budget, does that cause the state to ask questions?
No, and.
You said, no, it does not?
It does not.
All right. Well then.
Now, the moving target part of this, the moving target part of this though is, I mean, we have, we have tried to be realistic on expenses and we've tried to be slightly conservative on our revenue forecasts. Uh, at the moment, um, there is a certain level of uncertainty, um, in what we think, uh, sales tax will do and what we think business tax will do. All of that is responded, uh, to a large extent to consumer sentiment. Um, and revenue and expense are something of a moving target. We can make a pretty good revenue estimate. The expense portion is, you don't know when. Would you drive out to Jackson, Tennessee with $250 in your pocket and think that you only needed 100? And then you need to get a tire change somewhere south of Tupelo. You understand? You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's, that's kind of the situation that you're in. You want to be, you want to be safe in the way that you do that. And so I don't want you to hear me say that you can do 15 and a half percent and you're fine. That you can do 16, 16% and you're fine. You are fine. You're fine. As long as nothing goes wrong and everything goes just like we think it's going to go.
You know, this is a typical, typical thing about government. There's not a problem that we have that's not a good program. It sounds great. All of us understand that. We've got to make decisions. And this is what bothered me. The last two years, we've gone up 23% in general fund. 23%. Inflation in that time was around 5.7%. And this is how government, it keeps on growing and keeps on growing because every bit of that 23%, somebody likes. So you got, you've got to make some, let me give, I'm going to go a little side break here. Forgive me. But we had 6.2 million dollars reduction in debt service requirements two years ago. We could have left that 6.2 million dollars in debt service. It would not, it would not affected the general fund any way at all. It wouldn't affect the revenue. It wouldn't affect it any progress. That could have been put in roads. We've got 14.2 million dollars for COVID. 14.2. I understand very little if any of that went to roads, but that's the same thing. It was a revenue source one time. We could have put that on roads and it would not affect the general fund anything. That would have given us 20 million dollars, assuming the, the COVID money could go there. It could go to roads. Now, some of that COVID money went to things that we also support. I'm not saying that. But we needed to make the decision. Is that more important than roads? Is buying service merchandise more for the roads? So we're kind of there here now. We've come up here and said, we've got to have more money. We've got to have more money. Why? Because we went up 23% on the budget.
Okay. And I respect what you're saying, very much so. And I want to try to focus on what we can do for the future. Nathan, last Thursday night when we were in here and I, it's about the fund balance right off and it was closer to 19.
Right.
And then there was, um, let's say, we, we got another 400 to 500,000 where we maybe solved a little mistake. So that was going to be added to that also. So I was comfortable thinking we were at about 19.5. So just help us understand what you have found that made that fund balance difference.
I mean, we, one of the biggest things is that in order to, uh, you guys had, you guys had planned a 2 point some odd million dollar transfer in your capital fund this year uh, that you are actually not going to need because some of the capital projects haven't been completed yet. And there was some revenue that you received in capital fund with the sale of that land. Which piece was it? Does somebody remember? The, yeah, the Great Wall project portion. And so at the time Thursday night when we discussed that, we didn't show any transfers from the general fund to capital fund.
Okay, so tell us why it was important from last Thursday night to now that we transferred that?
Because you don't want to have a negative fund balance in your capital fund. And we, after we went through, we realized that we were going to have a negative fund balance in our capital fund. And so we added a $750,000 transfer for, for this year. As opposed to 2.82 million dollars.
I'm, I'm fuzzy on that, but I will give I could do that.
You just don't know.
I'll, I'll get into my personal feelings later. I just want to just listen to you and understand. But everybody knows I have some strong personal feelings, but I'll wait to express those later.
I mean, we, we're trying to present the, the most accurate information we have to.
And I do just want to be firm and go back to Richard's question. We can't hit the fund balance all the time. But maybe this is a time that I, this is, maybe this is a time that we should. And I will go ahead and say now that I strongly believe, as I strongly believe, Black Jared, that the public deserves to know everything as much and more so than I do. And with the capability of what you're going to bring to us and tell our units, we will be able to do that. But if I don't have a really clear picture, which I think I spent a pretty good amount of time trying, I don't think the public does. And I am a firm believer that if someone is heard, that they feel they've been listened to and they understand it, then they can truly start to maybe accept it. But I am not there at that point and I do not want to do that to the public. So going back to Richard's question, I'm sorry I partied a little bit. Now, I got into my motion sign off anyway. We can go down comfortably 2 to 3 million dollars in our fund balance?
You could.
That's, thank you.
How much would it be if you did? City sticker and you need to rest from the fund balance?
It's 1.3 for city sticker.
And you still have the city sticker and you didn't do the fund balance?
So, so I want, I want to point one thing out. The difference, the big difference in this number.
The big difference in the number is if you don't do the tax rate adjustment. You just talked about covering the 3.5 with city sticker fund balance and there's, you know, the dedicated road fund and you remove that 3 points.
There's just no road money. If you don't do something here, there's no road money.
There wasn't going to be road money. And that's, and my thing is that goes back to the capital street fund, the new, the new street fund. I mean, part of me feels like, oh, was that created because people love to have their streets done? And that's a way to justify where the tax increase and that money, part of that money's going to go. People are going to be like, oh, yeah, let's do it because we need our streets fixed now. And we didn't have money for the streets anyways. So now you want to increase taxes to show that some of that money's going to be.
You're looking, you're looking at me and I don't, I don't.
I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
Like, what's, I'm sorry.
I mean, take away, if they want the street done, we're raising taxes.
That's on him. That's on the city.
They got to understand that. I mean, that's what their money's for. I'm looking at if we do city sticker, the other front of the fund balance, let them know there won't be any funds being rolled down. Maybe next year we'll take a look at it and say, I mean, because at the point, we're going to have to do something.
Right.
I mean, if we continue, I mean, I don't know if you want to, we, a percentage of the taxes at one time and do a little bit, whatever. There's a couple of point where we're going to have to do something because if you continue to, as they said, kick your hand down the road to the point of what are we going to do when we get to the point of pushing, then we're going to be locked up. We're going to be out of the water.
Well, I, I, I agree with you on that. But now, part of it could be, look at this 23% increase and see if any of that can be cut back. 23%. Now, there were some good things in there that we would all vote for, but 23% in one, in two years is a lot. And if you want to go back, it's not been those two years. There's a history of this. But, so that's my point. We got to sometimes say, whoa, enough government, you know? And, and, and that's what's scary here.
So what would you think?
What I would, I would not, I would not say anything right now, but I knew here's what I would do. I would take this budget and say, okay, if we need to find a million dollars in it and we'll take the rest of it out of those, we'll get it coming immediately. The mayor would appoint a committee of all of us and we would start immediately looking at long-term forecasts. How many cars do we need? How many roads do we need? What else do we need? And, and not only just that, but every aspect of government, a government will look at it and see, is there any way we can, we can cut here? Because originally not. I, I'd never think I would vote for that, but I might be convinced to. If you could show me the history of what happened.
Okay, can we stop right there and listen to that statement? That's what I want to drill at some point, that the average person, again, if they are understood or someone listened to them and they can be explained. None of us are going to agree on anything in this room. But if we listen to each other, we can come up with compromises. No one in here has the best solution to anything. But if we listen to each person, we can compromise. And I am not for.
No offense.
Nobody knows. We haven't seen.
But this is what we said last year.
Exactly. And that's a good point. We don't need to do what we did last year. Right after this, we need to start next month with this committee working then and come in and report openly to the, to the citizens every month. Where are we financially? What have we found? How are we doing on tax revenue? How are we doing on expenses?
Because if we don't do something, this is what we're going to be saying.
Exactly. But JP, that's our fault.
But I think we need to, I mean, look at, like I said, the fund balance, city sticker. And I think if we talking about raising taxes in the next couple of years, whatever, we, I think if you explain to the people why I'm raising the taxes, show them why your taxes are being raised. This is where your money's going to. I think people can accept and know about that.
Thank you.
But then, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something. We can't keep on not doing it. I mean, and have this whole discussion and we get lost.
Now, you know, I, I, I call around to the Bob and Gears just to discuss prices and something has to be done. Uh, the street department was paying a hundred and one dollars a yard for concrete. Now they're paying, this, this other year, now they're paying 178 dollars a yard. Asphalt was 75 dollars a ton. Now they're paying 95 dollars a ton. Uh, maintenance department was paying a hundred dollars per unit of what we thought it was for door knobs. Now they're paying 250 dollars per door knob. Every department I've contacted, the prices are just, just spectacularly higher than what they were before. Uh, public works, pipes, concrete, wires, asphalt, up 10%, 15% since last year. Uh, so something has to be done. The, the, the increase in revenue the city receives, and the city does receive an increase in revenue because of all the building that's going on and all these kinds of things. That's happening. But the, the increase, the, the rate of increase in revenue lags behind the rate of increase for costs. That's just the reality.
And that's what we need to study, to show those things on, here's, on the front, before I did the street department test.
So I have no problem with that. So I'll just tell you all, my fellow councilmen, where I am right now, that might change, uh, before Tuesday. Where I am is that we, we accept the budget that was prepared originally, not the one with the increases. That we don't, that we don't increase taxes, that we don't increase the city stickers. We go with what was proposed before and we pay for that out of the, uh, out of the fund balance. And that we alert the public between now and next time of the increasing costs that we have, which they, which they know about it. They know everything is increased. And we have to change that. But let me tell you what the cities don't, what the residents are feeling. We have, last two years ago, whenever it was, when the state did that re, re whatever, re appraisal. People said the city did that. The state did that. But, but whether the city did it or the state did it, they think to them it's the same. They got to pay more. So that's what they're looking at. So unless and until we make our argument and tell them why it's necessary and we have a year to do that, that's the way I think we should go. Pay more out of that fund budget.
The increase in the budget is something that they have. If we, uh, we're going to meetings, I think Richard and Kenny were asking the department heads, things they needed, will that add up to the budget?
Now, the decisions weren't, we talked about the critical was, well, you know, here's the thing. You know, I, I appreciate this conversation. That's why I made the proposal I did because last week there wasn't any. I mean, it was just, it was, look to me. We had nothing.
Oh, we asked you to.
Yeah, and I did. That's what I did. And so actually, it's, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that. Um, because I mean, the decision needs to be made. I mean, the prices are going up. We still have, um, things to fund. But I was going somewhere and it, Frank agreed what I said.
Oh, no. Well, I think I'm impressed with the fact that we can openly do this. We have come a great distance to be able to do this. And I want to, I always appreciate Richard's values, where he stands. And, um, the city sticker did concern me because that's a big increase for people that can't afford it. So.
I know where I'm going, where I was going. We had the budget workshops and had the, the department heads in. After I went through and made my cuts in the budget and documented all that with them, there was questions asked every department, from council members, but there was one question that was never asked in any department. What can you live without? No one ever asked a department that. It was always, what else do you need?
And I think I asked the question, y'all asked the department heads, what do you need? But I worked on the funding.
Yeah, that's why I made the signal. We're, we're asking them, what critical needs do you have? But we have to pay for it. And there, there was never, a department was never asked, is there anything in this department you can live without?
Tagging on to that, you know, zero base budget, might be time for us to do that one year.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I would love to get there, but when you work on the AS400 system.
Right, that's true. Yeah, we're, we're the place we might get a home loan.
Wait, where is this, uh, this Johnson in there?
I thought I had today. She was.
Will you ask her to come in?
See the sticker slash, take the rest of the money. City sticker slash, take the rest of the money. Fund balance, they don't sound like they're for the fund balance.
And all these.
Yes, I, I think yes, I think what we can do is, is try to go where we can. We can talk about that and we can get to actual what we want to do. And then if we need to change anything, that'll give us time to change it in time for the publication for Tuesday. Or not, if we can't do it in time to change it, then there could be a motion to amend the ordinance Tuesday. And then so the motion to amend, we can then go through, we're going to come over through the process. Then we can have the second reading will still happen from the amended motion. So we don't, we wouldn't have to republish, we didn't make the amendment Tuesday.
I don't think we're going to do anything this year, we're going to still be in a worse situation next year. We gotta do something.
But if we don't, I'm not going to ask for budget reports anymore on a monthly. I'm going to expect them. Because the budget committee was put in place, and the bylaws say, a monthly report. With this technology that we have, and we've been paying for three to five, however long it is. We can truly have transparency. We should be able to click and say, I'm not happy, this, this department is getting a little much. It's getting maybe too much. And I do think we owe it to the public, we did the salary survey. We've really come up with salaries, but we're at 72% paying salaries. So we might need to explain that or justify that. Because 72%, most municipalities, and I wanted to really fact check this, but I believe it's between 65, 68 to 70%. So that could be a justification that we need to make to the public also. Um, I even have another little area I'd like to cut, but.
So, you said, I was going to ask you about this, because we talked about this afternoon, but did you, you may have answered the question. You said that 72%.
Percent.
Oh, percent is allocated towards salaries and benefits.
And when we started in 2019, I, I, I'm going to let Nick comment.
Yeah.
I've got 45 and I.
Council, the councilwoman asked, what, what we, what, uh, what the percentage of general fund operating was, um, was salary and benefit expense? And in 2019, which, and that number was about 69%. And when we calculated using the same way, about 70, 71, wasn't it 71, 70?
72.
Yeah, I, yeah. And so, you know, you're looking at a margin of one and a half there, or so, somewhere in there. Um, I mean.
If, if it's over 2% between what we're trying to do, then that's something that we might have to, I'm just.
We, we need to look at it again because that salary plan, this is one of the things last year that I was trying to make some points about. It looks to me like we need to ignore the salary plans on the startup. And I have not, I need to give a view and go over that, let you straighten me out. But your point is valid on that, that needs to look at and make sure. We're going by our own guidelines and not changing guidelines. This year it looks like we did. Yeah, and it got a little report printed out, I think. Yeah, so we blame this on Bobby. But just for, just like, our, our salaries have gone up 31% in the last two years.
Yes. And that's really hard.
Because we started out paying officers in the last three years.
That was actually broken up. Police and fire actually run up less than the other departments did.
We had a position, so we didn't have a public works director until a year and a half ago. I mean, so you can, it's, it's, it's not apples and apples, we've had a position, we've had.
But that's why, that's, that's the total number is the maintenance budget this year.
What else is everybody thinking?
What I see.
City sticker.
Yeah, I would be.
Right.
I don't know if the public, Richard, I would like for you to, because I, I feel like when you put something double. Again, 48 to 52% of our population is at poverty level and.
Now, 21 is at poverty level, 48 is at asset limited income restricted.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So that could be a really big deal. So I would defer, I would rather hear what you have to say on that, about the city sticker and business costs.
Yeah, no, no to double the city sticker, no to increase the taxes. No, we both agree.
So going back, I'm sorry, going back to what you said. Could it, I, I agree, but could there be, do you want to say something back to say maybe 10%, 20%? I mean, to raise it some?
Well, my question would be, next year, when we're three and a half million short again, what are we going to do?
I think that we better have done all this year, starting in January, that we have a solid budget report. That we have a system that we can go to and say, we're spending, and I'm not picking on parks, but we're spending X amount on parks. We spent X amount on this. You haven't seen one move rotate. We do that all year long. They need to understand what's going on. Now, your and my views are a little bit different on what our, I don't want to, to vote for what I think my constituents want. I want my constituents to understand and come to me and tell me their thoughts. Even if it's 10 of them, that's what I value and that's what I want. So I'm going to stay extremely strong that if we don't have this up online, a budget where anyone in the city can look at. Understand to the best of their ability, know where every dime is being spent. Then whatever we have to do, the public will at least know about it. And if we try to cut or we need to cut, then we have done what a council should be doing.
I don't disagree with that. I think unfortunately, they expect us to be educated for them. That's why they elect, this is the biggest turnout we've ever had in the last two years. Because they're not engaged and they're not involved until they see something on social media. And then they go crazy and.
My mom always taught me, you deal with somebody's pocketbook, you understand.
Sure. I made a very profound statement and we just let it kind of slide. And that's, the question is, what can you reduce or have we worked at? I, I think that's, that is a.
And that's what concerned me. We've been, we've been sitting around this table and talking about raising, we've not really talked now a lot about cutting.
Right, and then we get to the point.
Now, I think, I think this. Toy office department cut down. And we asked the same question, and what's the need?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I feel bad for the staff. I'm looking at my boss and y'all asking me a question, what do y'all need after y'all told me to cut? I'm looking right at my boss saying.
Well, I mean, it's really, the last two years, we sit around a table and talk about cutting. You don't bring the corporate ads in, and both times, you added money to it.
Well, the answer, the answer to that is say, pick a, pick a revenue number, which I still watch sale revenue in one place, Nate. But pick a, pick a revenue number and talk to the department and say, you got 5%. But 5% don't come back to me anymore.
And it is.
Or we from city charter.
I got some ways we can.
And hey, none of y'all offered to turn your salary back in either.
I did, I first started. And he said it was.
If you will, if we cut the, uh.
I did when I first started.
I broke down, I don't make my year's salary, just if you want to make six thousand a year.
I bought 15, I'm looking at 50% of mine for three, three years.
I'll, I'll be spending over what we're doing now.
I'm going to don't make your back to nonprofit.
Yes.
I would.
Wait, wait. I live in a nonprofit world. I think we need to cut the nonprofits. I'll give my salary back, I give it back to nonprofits, uh, way more than I, than I take in from the city. But I'm a little concerned that, you were playing with, we're just playing with some stuff, we've not talked about.
No real plan, no real plan. That's the, that's, and that's been my whole point is, everybody says cut, but nobody has put together a plan.
Well, I was going to this weekend, only because I've had, anyway, I do have smaries that I think we should cut.
Well, tonight's the night to, to talk about it.
I think that every single person, when it says travel and, um, it's not very much. But training and travel, I want the best, I want them to be as smart as they can be. But right now, no. Until we can see, when you get ready for that training, then let's see if we can pay for it. The travel, sorry Johnny, we might have to go down to just one, you know, we, we are stewards. I'll spend my money crazy. But we are stewards of the city. And until we actually look, that's what I would do in my business. I would say, I don't have the money right now, I respect you, I want you, but we can't do that training this year. Are you okay with that?
I thought.
Well, that, that's, that's one more.
But the biggest problem we got, we probably have this problem if some of y'all go to some of the trainings I go to. Because the trainers that I go to, they discuss issues like this. And when you start cutting training and going out looking at resources. You staying here in Jackson, you're not going out and traveling, get some information, get ideas, getting, seeing what's going on in other places. You're going to be a dumb city, I ain't got nothing we can do. You gotta get outside, you gotta get out for a while. We can't sit here and not do training, that's, that's the worst thing in the world, to not do training.
Like, our auditor, she turned in 5,000, so everybody had cut. And I actually just called her and I said, you still have 5,000, why haven't you cut yours? She said she cut it to 2,500, so there's your 2,500 right there.
The total amount of travel and trains less than 4,000. That's, 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 that's. First responders and the required trainees.
But it's still a tall, it's still, we've got to come together and bring issues out.
Why would you want your staff training?
I do, but I'm just saying, if, when it comes up, do we have to?
Excuse, I have, when you going next week? What you say you got to go to?
For the, uh, Real Estate Association, going to Washington.
For some what, training and more information?
Uh, no, inter-representation.
Yeah, but it's training. Well, it's coming out of his fund, it's, it's coming out of.
And Johnny, you know I respect you and I want you to do, but I'm just saying.
I just mean, it's for all of us. But you can't cut training for staff, I don't believe in that, I mean, that's crazy.
Some of the trainings are hard, I think, some of them.
Some of them, and I, I'm not an expert at all, I'm just bringing up a point.
So let's, so let's do this, it's 501. And so we just pan this for a moment and then we'll go through the agenda, so we'll do that piece and then come back. Do that. We have some seats right out for a quick. Everybody, if you got a comment or idea, write down.
I want some, I want like you.
All right. I will not beat the record. Mr. Richard gone in.
All right.
But, uh, providing it is, uh, okay, the council, first reading number three, we will skip that and come back to that at the end. Because that will probably be what takes up the most, uh, time, so everybody pay with that. Okay. We will, Jackson City Council meeting, June 3rd, 2025, we'll meet at 9:00 AM. George A. Smith Meeting Room, we'll have a call to order. Invitation and pledge of allegiance to the flag, Councilman Johnny Dodd. Roll call, approval of minutes of the May 6th, 2025 City Council meeting. Proclamations, recognitions, annual report from Financial Empowerment Center. Invitation for public comment. Proposed first reading. Proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery and appropriate $50,000 for the purchase of a police patrol vehicle.
I can speak to that if you'd like for me to.
Anybody.
Um, the, uh, they got about $37,000, uh, in insurance recoveries. They had, uh, about $13,000, uh, already in their insurance recoveries account. And so we put those monies together, transferred it to a capital fund to buy replacement vehicles.
Consideration of ordinance to rezone property at 1037 Lower Brownsville Road from I-1 Planned Industrials Park. District to I-2 Light Industrial District comprising a 36.1 acres, more or less.
It's gone through the.
Gone through the.
Committee.
We will come back to number three, second reading. Proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery and appropriate $66,346 for the repair of Roundabout Mall. Number two, proposed budget amendment to transfer funds of $38,500 from fire department travel, training and memberships to operating supplies. Due to increased cost of medical supplies. Training.
I'm just saying that's a good use of money where they had it and we can actually say what are. So I'm ready to say that.
Number three, proposed budget amendment to transfer $40,500 from city recorder salaries to IT contractual services. To implement TCM Enterprise Document Management System.
I have a question to ask. Somebody, uh, is that, did, do we have just a little bit of clarification on that?
The TCM Enterprise?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's, so in the past, the city had a piece of software called Image E's that they use for storing documents. Uh, of all type, but primarily financial document. Um, that software has been deprecated to the point that if you have a new computer on your desk, you in fact cannot install that software. I know, but this, I can't install that software. Um, the TCM product is, they call it's Tyler Content Management, integrates with the ERP, with our accounting system. So right now, every invoice, every check, uh, every purchase order, everything that we generate is stored automatically in Tyler Content Management. But the only things that we can presently store in there are financial documents to do with the ERP and accounting system. This would allow us to digitize any document, store it in a sensible way, search it by free form text. And also make vast swaths of it public if we chose to do so.
Thank you.
I mean, is that good?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Much needed, thank you.
There's no more, well, there's a little more Bobby money, but I think we may need another scanner. No, okay, okay.
All right, number four, proposed budget amendment to recognize $405,433.80 in Tennessee ECD. Connected communities grant funds and appropriate $450,482 for construction and furnishings at the senior center.
I've, I've got questions because this is where we get confused sometimes, and I believe one's going to help us next year with our grants and how much we've spent. That's a 9010 grant for the senior center. So what we are allocating is part of that grant and then part of what we're paying, correct?
Part of it is funded, part of it is going to be essentially fund balance or part of it's going to be offset by revenues. I mean, hopefully it's offset by revenues, that's your plan.
But not that total amount?
No, ma'am, not the total amount, the difference between the two, the 405 and the 450, is what's actually going to have to be financed by something else.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely.
So how much of that is grant?
400.
Excuse, 400.
Okay, so we're 400.
Good question.
Number five, proposed ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 101-1 concerning alcoholic beverages to correct a Schreiner's error.
It's the numbers.
There was some. Oh, you have a few letters.
I want some budget.
No, there's a, there's a typo, I expected it.
New business, uh, consideration of street acceptance request for Kingston Creek, Section 1. Questions? Number two, consider, consideration of resolution authorizing the Jackson Fire Department. Application to the staffing for adequate fire emergency response safer grant.
Can I ask a question? Um, if you want to speak to this, I'd love to hear, but I also, while you're here, have a budget question for you.
So speak to that when we double.
Okay, okay. Uh, the safer grant that actually just opened, it opened, uh, the Tuesday following, uh, when we had our original budget hearing. So what it does is it allows us to apply for a grant. And, uh, it's a three-year grant, federal government will pay 75% of the salary and benefits for firefighters that we hire. Uh, for two years, they'll pay that 75%. And on the third year, they pay 35% of it.
What was the first two years, I missed?
75%. That's, that's salaries and all benefits.
Thank you, and so that would be important for us to know for our plan to be able to budget for that increase.
Absolutely, yes.
So, I mean, it would be for new hires, or now we have propositions slated.
And that's what I wanted to ask you, my question was going to get the budget is about new hires. Thank you, Mayor.
Number three, consideration of contract renewal with T-Dot.
These are the identical contracts we've had in the past, same, uh, allocation pricing as last year. As with the maintenance of, on the median strata ways, the state grounds, as well as, uh, literal level.
Number, what did you?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Consideration of committee and board reappointments, Jackson Energy Authority, reappointment of Pam Vinnie. Housing Commission reappointment of Tara Skinner and Ginger Williams. Housing Commission reappointment, uh, Tara Skinner and Ginger Williams. Budget amendments west than ten thousand. Consideration of invoices over ten thousand. Back to number three, a first reading. Proposal ordinance to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
I want to, I'm trying to do better, Mr. Richard, since I'm the same man. Um, Chief, I have a question for you that I wanna absolutely remain very supportive of you. So I believe there were four individuals or four firemen women that you need for the upcoming year? Or four places?
Four places, they only need eighteen.
Yeah.
We need eighteen, but are you comfortable? Because Mayor Bay, a valid point about we don't wanna hold eighteen places. Do you feel comfortable withholding four places?
With the, with the attrition that we've had recently and the folks there leaving, it's gonna make, uh, uh, our hiring of nine, which we can absorb into the budget as then proposed.
And we know that you had a secretary issue, but we were told, we just, you weren't here last time when we went through this. So we were told that you had another person that was gonna be able to maybe move into that job. Possibly a secretary?
Yes, well, we have a secretary's position that's come open and is posted right now. And, uh, and, uh, the one that we have currently is, is going to be retired.
I just wanna make sure you were covered and we were all on the same page. Because Councilman Richard asked a good question. He said that we're not gonna see six months down the road, an amendment to try to transfer money. So I wanted to make sure that yours was covered.
We're, uh, we're, we're good right now, yes.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
Pending any major breakdowns, anything like that, you know, and I think that's probably civilized.
Thank you.
How many department heads in, in here right now, department heads? All right, what, what do you, department heads that are in here right now? Based on the budget that you submitted to your department, is there anything that you can cut?
Who is in here?
Yeah, he has to, and he. No one asks. Anything that you can cut? All department heads, and just, you don't have to speak up at once.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say.
The one thing you can cut.
Five thousand.
Wait, hold on.
I'll stand up and say that we have cut as deep as we can.
All right.
Now, if City Council, uh, you all decide that you wanna cut deeper.
Yeah. I'm asking you to think.
We'll do, we'll do what we hope, but when we look at it, I am a hundred percent cooked for standing here.
All right.
Saying that we have reviewed the buzzer forwards, backwards, sideways, and, and there's no waste. And I welcome any of you to come down and sit with me. In fact, I've invited a bunch of you to come down and sit with me to see the operations, for operations that we do.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate that.
Hold on, now I got the floor. Next, let me get all them out of the way. Who's next?
I'll say that all of our departments, public works, we're as lean as we can be.
All right, next, who else?
I will speak. If you look on page two of your expense report, weers offices down twenty-eight percent this year, uh, as well as public affairs down thirty-nine percent.
I have a question.
Wait, 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 wait.
About the mayor's office.
Okay, okay, just wait, just wait one second.
Office of Innovation is up, but that's because one salary has been moved over to.
Okay, we just very briefly, is there anything else you can cut?
I think we have cut, like I said, twenty to forty percent.
Okay, so you just said no.
No.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Any other department head? Is that it? Yes, yes.
I don't have anything, no.
All right.
You need department heads up here, though, did you say that there was?
You had a question for me?
That?
Well, I just.
Thank y'all for giving, Cam's, I appreciate it.
I know you will, or whoever picked it for you, it was worth. How many, cause I got the HR of departments and who is in each department and who is over each department. Mayor, you, it shows that you're over, um, L.B., not L.B.A., yeah, L.B.A., um, Abby, Claire, um, the intern, it shows like it broken down, like there's like six or seven in your, like, mayor's office. And then you're over, like, council, all of those, Tyler, and the four that I just said. How, how much has the mayor's office increased in employees in the past, like, per, um, mayor? Like, so like, when it was nineteen? Yeah, who was in two thousand nineteen to now? And why, what's the justification of that?
Yeah, we've had programs, uh, we have, before there was no communication. And so as much as individuals like you say don't communicate now, there's none for forehand. Uh, we have communication, public affairs, public affairs person, they're actually, they were salaried out of engineering, over the public affairs work. And so why would we do that? We moved to the mayor's office. Uh, Love Your Block, Neighborhood Services is out of there too. Uh, now, while your district may not receive as much as other districts do, they provide a service.
Right.
They are enhancing people's lives, and so.
So, okay, so what, what is, like, how many employees have increased since twenty nineteen?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can tell you we've cut two positions in the past year.
Okay, what position?
We had Amy.
Who? I think Amy's them.
And Cecile.
So right now, the mayor has hired, Chief of Staff.
Cecile, she was the department secretary.
What now is staff, I think it's, Chief of Staff, Executive Systems to the Mayor, Community Development Coordinator, Neighborhood Service Director, Neighborhood Service Specialist, Office of Financial Management, Communication Director, and Community Relation Director.
I also hired the Public Works Director, I hired an assistant city engineer, I hired more people in Brownsville, Kiki. Those are all, while not directly under me, they're all under the, I was supposed to do, hire more people in the street department, more police officers, more firefighters. And so we're only looking at just one department. That seems a little political.
I, I didn't vote for the budget last year because I had concerns with the increases in salaries. We have amazing city employees. I don't know what everyone does, though. And, like, that's why I got Human Resource to tell me how many are in each department. And I would like job descriptions. I mean, because. Say what?
Larry, you're wearing a cap.
I mean, just because, I mean, a large percentage of the budget is salaries. And, I mean, you, you're talking about cuts and stuff, and I don't, I don't want anyone to have their job cut. But there's an issue with balancing.
If you've done some of those and you're, if you're just starting off, that's fine, that's okay.
Well, cause you're at the top.
You can just start one, but you're not starting another department, and that's okay. I'm okay with that. Not, you know, you know, the city engineer, you'll, that's okay, that's fine. But here's the thing. Just because your district doesn't receive the majority of the services, because if I can go around the table here, so you worked, I think, the municipal court services.
Yeah.
My kids never been there. JP, your kids ever been there?
No.
Are your kids?
I'm not that.
Are your kids? No, your kids weren't here, so that's, that's a hundred percent around the table that have not used the service of municipal court services.
Absolutely.
And so by that, I could say, where are you working? You're certainly what I'm doing.
Well, and, and, and with all due respect, like, I actually met with Tyler and I'm actually gonna meet with L.B.A. and say, you guys have great programs. However, like, with Tyler in my district, fourteen people received those services. Does it mean it's not worth continuing? Absolutely not.
Cause you, you say yourself that your district doesn't have trash and it's a flood.
Well, but I'm still gonna try to work with Tyler to do a town hall in my district because there are people still that are wealthy who don't know how to manage money.
That's why.
So I want, I want him to be able, and people in my district, to be able to utilize those services to show the cost benefit. Same with L.B.A., like, and that's, when I said, I turned around and said, I wanna talk to you. And that is the reason, because I don't want these programs to go away. But you do eventually have to look at the cost benefit of them. And I want people in my district to, heck, I was asking her about the lawnmower, the Love Your Block lawnmower, because our lawnmower went out, and I'm like, how do we use that? I mean, I want more people to know about these things so they can be utilized around the city as a whole.
I, I appreciate that, some of the programs are in chemistry. And so the, the video you saw, the elderly woman, he makes twelve thousand dollars a year, is not gonna live in, you know, still. And that, and that's invaluable, her staying her home in ancient place.
And that's why it's so important to have this community, where those things can be discussed, the community can have, like, the points, both of them.
I will not beat Richard's record of the shortest, uh, meeting from setting in, but I don't wanna go the longest either, so, cause I think we're getting, I think we're getting a little bit in the, in the. I know, but we're getting, but we're getting in the weeds, we're not really addressing.
I want in the weeds to say something.
What you saying?
I gotta tell you, like, my visit, this was your lucky deal last year. But two years ago, if I'm mistaken, y'all had a zero increase in question, is that correct? And I think that needs to be noted, that what's, the department heads are not taking these for granted, they are looking at it. That doesn't mean they give you some cuts, mate, I mean, on that, but, uh, we appreciate that.
I think we'll make it round here, so instead of nice, JP, just show.
Wait, yes, yes.
But when you look at the different districts and you look at what Tyler is doing, what, what these two right here are doing, I called Matt Marshall to try to get a wider perspective. And I think we need to hear that because if we help seventeen people, right now, I'm like, man, that's, you know, I agree. But if you look at now their taxpayers, now their credit increase has gone up. So I think that's what we have to evaluate.
Five of them are homeowners now.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely benefits. I would like people in my district.
I don't, I don't call that wasteful spending like some call it. I'm not saying y'all call it that, some people call it wasteful spending.
Cost benefit, if we can get those things.
If they're homeowners and they're contributing and they're not, and they're not living off the system?
Um, sixty-nine thousand.
I think we need to bring that out.
We have to, we need to, I, I would like to see that be increased.
Oh, actually, it's, when you start a program, you never start out at, well, that's not, you gotta build up, it's difficult. The program's only three years old, so you can, you can't scrutinize the numbers we have as we're building.
All right, now, you and I do it then, I want to be able to have the same thing for you. Cause there are people in the city who don't even know about this. And so they would maybe utilize it, so that's why I'm gonna do that.
Okay, and, and I can either ask it now or I can ask it Tuesday.
Should we give up?
He said he was donating salaries.
I think we need to understand the financial empowerment and, and the role that United Way pays to it and what we pay to United Way. So I didn't know that, and I would like for that to either be explained tonight or Tuesday, if you would go through.
We're, we're gonna have a killer presentation, and I bet that most of you will wanna double down on the FEC program.
I don't wanna name any names, but there was a council member two years ago that said they wanted to triple the investment of the FEC.
There's a direct, did I say that? I had, I had, I had a good experience with that one time, yeah.
We forgot Director Russ, that I was.
He's how old he is in the town.
We gotta, we gotta have lawnmower candidates, you know? Look, Louis is saying enough, saying, do you?
My name's.
Do you need me for anything else?
They're bionic, I shouldn't be.
I'm gonna go check on JP. It has to be the department. The only way I can see it, this one, is saying, we need a three and a half million dollar cut. Among yourselves, make, make a plan how to do it. If you don't, we're good, and we'll cut the wrong one.
No, it's, I'll just water, all right.
So, a serious note, so right now, the presentation's gonna be made for the tax increase and all.
Yes, yes, so we don't have to republish, cause we have to republish and that.
So we'll just amend that.
If you, if we wanna make an amendment, then to do that, we'll give a motion and say, make an amendment, just put it up. Sorry.
JP, do you want to give Russ a quick breakdown or anything? Should we, Russ, do you have any questions?
Well, it's all on my side, too, everything comes.
Okay, there's been, um, a compromise made, um, that Richard has brought up to take from fund balance, um, instead of the city sticker and to increase taxes. So if you wanna digest that, then. You're on speakerphone, so I can let you just digest that.
Repeat what you just said. Seemed like you said something wrong about what I said.
That instead of raising taxes and doing the sticker, that we are going to.
I think Johnny made the, Johnny made the city sticker and then.
So Johnny has suggested, I think to clarify, Johnny has suggested doing the city sticker, the increase, and taking the money from the fund balance. Richard has suggested no increase, no city sticker, take it all from the fund balance.
That's right, that's what I said. I don't know. I said it.
Leave it to me to quote you correctly.
Richard, um, what if, and I don't even know if this is possible, someone, a constituent actually, I don't know. What if we, like, impose a twenty, a fifty dollar sticker on vehicles? If you own a vehicle, like, twenty twenty-three and newer, and keep it at twenty-five or under, like, anything older than that? Because he's like, if you can afford a twenty twenty-four vehicle, you probably can afford the sticker. And I, like I said, I don't even know.
I like the idea, I don't think we can do it, but.
You don't, I'm not being constitutional.
Well, I just say.
We have legal here, we have legal here.
It would have to be. The authority to tax comes from the state and the state gets to drive what, how, when, tax. I haven't read it recently, but I doubt that's in there.
Okay, so you're saying it can't be done?
Correct. Think it can be done.
So another constituent brought up, and Ron or Nathan, you guys might, she said, how about a city service fee? Have you ever quite heard of that? So I guess cities do that, several cities do that, and she moved from Charleston, West Virginia, and.
Sounds like a nice way of saying the tax.
It's like, so how they did it, cause I call, I actually called the city and asked, like, hey, she hasn't called me back yet, cause she kinda missed me. But she said, have people that commute and work in the city know about that?
It's a Tennessee Supreme Court case that struck that down about thirty-five years.
Struck it down?
Yes.
Dang.
So it's pretty much payroll tax, for those who look outside, see, come in.
It's actually, it's fifty years, cause I'm, I'm a lot older now than the first time I read that, so.
So, okay, so I can let her know that.
It's unconstitutional.
Supreme Court.
It's Tennessee, it's just in Tennessee.
Okay.
I know, I think Kentucky does it too.
Cause, they tried it in Kentucky and they tried it in Tennessee.
Russ, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
I understand.
Oh, I just, we've already did our fund out, so.
Correct.
When we get back to, we money bank our fund out, we can't just break or take to council fee. I mean, you can, but that's not a, that's not a strictly responsible approach.
I agree with you. So what do you suggest?
I have some suggestions at the moment, but I will work toward that, I'll tell you, maybe Tuesday. I still have other big deal with it.
Thank you, Russ.
Anything else, Mr.?
I, I, and I'm mature, I'm being patient and act.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a gentleman, so, wait, there you go, because none of this happens incredibly quickly, as far as.
We, we are going to maintain this, so we don't like to republish.
Okay.
And then, you know, right now, at the moment, we have two different proposals. And so we'll have to, it'll be an amendment to what is proposed.
So you're telling me I just have to wait?
Yes.
Okay.
Go for it, patience.
Because I could do a little of the work ahead of time, and I'll do some of the work ahead of time.
We need to handle the body issue.
So we're, we're at this point right now, it, I'm not, I believe that, I believe the phrase is throwing shade. I'm not throwing shade at you. But if we had, if we had acted on this in November or December, we would be done already. Because we, wait, and you guys had some great conversations and you, you did.
Because we waited, and you guys had some great conversations and you, you did some, but we didn't, uh, we are close enough now to issuing financial statements that they would like to see at least, um, the, the ratings agencies and the underwriters would like to see at least auditor repaired, unaudited statements before we actually go to ratings agencies. And so that's, I'm waiting now, I mean, that's, back to Candace's conversation earlier, we, we, you know, I mean, we have several reasons, we want to get done with that, partly because I want to start the next one, but we're, we're essentially waiting on, on at least a portion of our audit to be completed.
Twenty-three or twenty-six?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-six. That's obvious.
Yes.
As, as we, the process is improving, it's light at the end of the tunnel, I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's not a train. And so the plan is once we budget start next year, then we start on audit, we'll be there and make us, now that we have everything in place and not using AS four hundred dot matrix systems and converting banks and financial systems and that information to be readily available. And then again, Judge Hope Finance, that's, that's weekly updates.
Just one more thing, Wes. So talking with the folks in our office, and I know I've talked with, I know I've talked with you, Council, Councilperson Wallace and some of his other folks, um, I, I talked to, right now, part of our FY twenty-four problem is we operated in two systems that year. That's not entirely the problem, we have some process problems that we, we have some process issues that need to be resolved. The audit for FY twenty-five is going to be simpler because we were all in one system about FY twenty-five. We are still dealing with some process problems that will make it more of a challenge than it should be, I'll be honest. But FY, by the end of FY twenty-six, this, I, I, y'all will be so done with this, we're going to be done, and we're going to be done in October, November, and then, you know, I mean, that, that's, that's where we are. And, um, I, um, I, if you see any of the finance team besides me, please, please tell them that, that you appreciate their work. I've, I've got one lady who's working on some of the stuff that we talked about today, Candace, she's working until six-thirty or seven some nights, so she can get the next thing that they need, so they can send back to us the next thing that they need, you know, I mean, and that's her specialty and she's doing a great job. The, the folks downstairs in accounting, and I'll be honest, our department heads have been incredibly responsive to every single thing that we need when we've asked for it. And, and so, I mean, we want to be done with this. And the light, there is a light at the end of the tunnel and I'm, I'm better than ninety-nine percent sure it's not a train there. I mean, I, we were hoping to, we were hoping to be substantially complete, uh, by today. We are not substantially complete.
It's day by day.
It is day by day now. And, and, and Councilwoman Busby spoke, spoke with, with our audit firm apparently, and they, I mean, they're sort of on the timeline I am. I'd love to be, I'd love for this issue to be a draft middle of June. You know what, I mean, I don't know that that will happen, but, but we would love to have it. And as soon as they get that, now we're going to start the next, I mean, that's just the way it works, so, not forever though, so, sure.
Mr. Donnell's ready to go?
Yeah.
And I second that. See you on Tuesday.
Everybody better.